All right. This time, I would like to call the meeting of the Stokes County Board of County Commissioners May 9th. I'll call the meeting to order if you'll stand for the invocation, please. Your heavenly Father, as we come to you in prayer, we'd like to thank you for this day. We'd like to thank you for all the many blessings. We'd like to thank you for allowing us to be here today to do the business of the county. We ask for your wisdom, guidance, and direction in all the decisions that we make. We ask that you bring peace to our community and bring your wisdom to this meeting tonight, and it's in your name we pray. Amen. Stand for the pledge.
Pledge and allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, individual with liberty and justice for all.
This time, I will ask for a motion to approve the agenda. Are there any additions, corrections, or questions about the agenda? None, I'll entertain a motion.
I'll make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, and at this time, we're going to enter into the public hearing. This is a public hearing regarding the intent to close Victory Hill Church Road. The closure and abandonment of maintenance of Victory Hill Church Road was first discussed by the Board of Commissioners on February the 14th, 2022, and moved to the action agenda for February the 28th, 2022. On that, February the 28th, 2022, the item was removed from the agenda due to the Board needing further information before taking a vote. We have confirmed with NC DOT that the portion in Rockingham County has been closed and the order of closure has been filed. The NC DOT Board has also voted in favor of abandoning maintenance on the portion in Rockingham County as of March 10th, 2022. On April 11th, 2022, the Board voted on the resolution of the intent to close the portion of Victory Hill Church located in Stokes County and called a public hearing for May 9th, 2022, at 6:00. This public hearing notice has been advertised in the Stokes News for the past three weeks, as well as two signs advertising the hearing posted on Victory Hill Church Road. The Board will hear comments this evening during the public hearing related to Victory Hill Church Road. Each speaker will have four minutes to speak, and there will be a total of 30 minutes of time allotted for the public hearing. Please state your name, address, when called on to speak. Okay. See, the first person signed up to speak is Bobby Hickman.
My name is Bobby Hickman, and I know it ain't gonna do no good for me to speak. Y'all already decided on what to do, but I don't think it's right to close the road because that's been over 200 years. My grandpa, great-grandpa owned down the road, built that road, and it's just not right. And I ain't got nothing against Roy, no, no. They treat me good when they talk to me, but I think it's wrong to close that road because that cuts the whole Victory Hill Church Road off, and we've got feathers go around there, and I sure don't want to be up here.
Thank you. Next speaker is Anna Boliski.
I'm Anna at 741 Bennett Road in Stoneville. I second what Bobby said. Stokes and Rockingham denied closure on the shared road three times prior to today, stating it would not be in the best interest of the public. Rockingham County had a special call meeting three days before Christmas and a public hearing January 18th, when their county office didn't open until noon the same day because of snow and ice. County schools were also closed all week. A Rockingham County Commissioner confirmed Stokes passing closure of this road long before Stokes even heard about it. Rockingham also makes their wordage to include both DOT maintenance abandonment and county road closure. When combining the two, it's not proper protocol. Were these decisions ethical? Was it permitted because the landowner recently employed a Commissioner in each county? Nearly 100 community members signed petitions opposing this public road closure. There's two churches and one public winery and wedding venue less than a mile from this through road. These roads interchange and connect a community. We just heard at the last meeting the importance of emergency services response time. Emergency response time saves lives. Emergency Communications Director Dell Hall stated, "If Stokes Communication Center receives a call from Rockingham Communication Center requesting emergency assistance in the area of Victory Hill Church Road, the abandonment of this road would cause a delay in the response of Stokes County to assist and would cause a delay in response from the Communication Center and first responders' response in an emergency situation to calls which Victory Hill Church Road is the quickest route of travel." This road closing will extend route about four minutes one way and nine minutes the other way. Nothing has changed. This could be an easy decision because it's already been made three times before. It doesn't matter if a person has a fraction of an acre or thousands of acres. This comes down to right and wrong. Closing this road has not been in the best interest of the public three times across two counties, and it's not in the best interest of the public now. Thank you.
Okay, I'll call Ted Amos.
Well, you know I've been to meetings up here before, and you always wind up saying that we work for the people. You do. Okay. The question is, are you working for the people or working for the man with the big money? It's just something that y'all have to think about. But I run the road from his 70s, drove school bus on the road, early 70s, and I still run it. It's shortcut from local road to Bennett Road. But just ask yourself, are you working for the people when you make this decision, or are you working for the man with the big money? The man bought the land, he knew the road was there. Simple as that. And you got, like you say, they failed to close it a couple of times earlier. So the only thing that's changed is the buyer and the connections he may have with some people in power, be it the Highway Department or be it, you know, local government. But it's y'all's decision, and it's y'all's conscience. Thank you.
Okay, the next speaker is Madison Carol Snyder. We're going to pause for a second and check in our live stream. They said that. It was probably in the last meeting.
It's backin' up. The worst-case scenario, you upload it tomorrow, but it's not streaming for some reason. I can message David, but it may not be fixed during this.
It's recording.
It's recording. It's backin' up, but it's just, it may not.
I refer, please get David to speak.
Okay. All right, Ms. Snyder, you can go ahead. We're going to keep rolling this recording. We're just not live right now. Thank you.
Hello, my name is Madison Carol Snyder. My address is 201 North Elm Street in Greensboro. My family owns Carrollwood Farms, and we're the petitioner to close the road at Victory Hill Church Road between Local Road and Going School Road. The portion of Victory Hill Church Road is about six tenths of a mile long. The portion in Rockingham County is about two tenths of a mile, and the portion in Stokes County is just shy of four tenths of a mile. We've spoken to both the Fire Chief at the Northwest Rockingham Fire Department, as well as the Fire Chief at the Sandy Ridge Fire Department, and the both chiefs state that this road is not critical to fire and safety operations. We've also spoken to both fire departments about adding dry hydrants at our property to serve not only our property, but the community and surrounding areas. We look forward to working with both fire departments, as well as other emergency service providers, to help improve emergency services in the area. I refer now to the February 2nd, 2022 memo from County Manager Shannon Shaver that states, "The map called NC DOT Abandonment Review Form has been reviewed by Emergency Services, Planning, and the Tax Administrator. The review form was independently reviewed by each department head. Of the six persons, everyone has signed approval. The road known as Victory Hill Church Road is approved for partial abandonment as seen on the map attached. This portion of Victory Hill Church Road has very little traffic. In fact, the NC Department of Transportation stated several years back, 'The daily average traffic on this portion of Victory Hill Church Road is less than 20 cars per day.'" This portion of Victory Hill Church Road is not a thoroughfare. In fact, NC DOT has stated that North Carolina does not have a thoroughfare road in the system that is a dirt road. Thank you very much for your time.
Thank you. This time, there's no one else signed up to speak for the public hearing, or is there anyone else who wishes to be heard in the public hearing? All right. This time, I'll close the public hearing, and we'll move on to our agenda. Okay. Next item is the normal, the regular public comments. Okay. So I think, Bobby, you signed up on this one too, so I think you signed, did you want to speak again, or you just wanted to speak about the road? Yeah, you're on both sheets, but I think that was an accident. Okay. All right. Good deal. Thank you. All right, so there are no public comments, so let me read, let me do the comments for the manager and for our board. Mr. Morris, I'll start with you, Commissioner Morris.
Ma'am Chair, I'd like to welcome everybody to our meeting tonight, and thank you for your participation in our local government. That's all I have, ma'am chair.
Thank you. Commissioner Nichols.
Good to see everybody. I know there's been a lot of questions about things going on, and there's some stuff going on that seems to happen here in the county. It seems to be kind of fibbed. If y'all have any questions, please feel free to reach out to any one of us or County Manager to get the facts on it, and we appreciate you being here tonight. Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair.
All right. Rodney Mendenhall. Mr. Mendenhall's having surgery tomorrow. We need to be sure and stay a extra little prayer for him.
Thank you. Thank you, ma'am chair. Thank y'all for coming. It means a lot to me to see this room full. That's what it's all about. I've ran two times and been fortunate enough to serve y'all for six years, and I've got two more years. Worked for Sonia Cox, the superintendent, when she was on Board of Education, and I think the one thing I've always had is the ability to be a people person. And I just want to say to each and every one of you, thank you. Thank you for coming out tonight. Either way, your thought process, either, either way, I appreciate you coming out and expressing your opinion. And then after this meeting tonight, as Sonia said, I'm having surgery, probably be out about five or six weeks. I'm in good hands. Good hands with the good Lord. He'll take care of me. So thank y'all for being here tonight. I appreciate it.
All right, ma'am chair.
Great to see each and every one of you. Hope all of you mothers had a great Mother's Day yesterday. Keep the folks in Rockingham County in your prayers, your thoughts. The storm that went through Friday night, I got caught up in it and lost full fishing, and there was a lot of damage done in the Rockingham County area, then around the Red ville area. So we were blessed to hear the good Lord looked after us. So please keep these folks in your prayers. Thank you.
Again, I'd like to welcome everyone, and thanks for everybody coming out to participate in this meeting and to be here. It is good to see the room full and all the people who are watching online. Like Commissioner Barney Castle said, belated Happy Mother's Day to all the mothers out there. I spent my Mother's Day out planting flowers and sweats and freezing to death, but we did it. So, but we have a beautiful, beautiful day out there today, and thank you all for taking time to be here. Shannon?
Welcome, everybody here. It's nice to see such a room full here. I know a lot of faces in the room tonight. As one of our commissioners said, if there's ever anything we can do for you in our office, we're always glad to help you with any kind of requests that you have. Now, there's a lot of interest in different things going on because we're in the middle of an election, a primary election. So if there's public records you're interested in, Amber and I are always willing to get anything for you. You might need to help you make a good decision. So always reach out to us, and we're always here to help you. And thank you for being here, Shannon.
All right. The next thing I'll do is read the conflict of interest statement before moving on any further. Does there, is there any board member who has a conflict of interest with any of the items on the agenda for tonight, or one that could be perceived as a conflict of interest?
Ma'am Chair, I believe it is... Last one. Last one, okay. Item 8 on the action agenda proposed closure abandonment of Victory Hill Church Road. It can be perceived as a conflict of interest, and I want to make it clear that I'm actually doing work for a contractor, an actual contractor, not for Mr. Carroll himself, but as I found out a couple of months ago when I visited the property, it's actually a Mr. Carroll property. And this contract was bidded more than a year ago, but because of this, I will be recusing myself from that vote.
Okay. Anybody else have anything? All right. Moving on, the next item is the consent agenda, which includes minutes, the budget amendments, and the tax office items for approval. Do you have a motion to approve?
Make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right. So the next item is the information agenda, and I think Will Carter has, going to introduce our guest.
Good afternoon, Commissioners. I'm here this afternoon to introduce you to Mr. Roy Carroll, the owner of Carrollwood Farms. Mr. Carroll is here this afternoon to share some exciting information with you about a project he has planned for Stokes County. This project will be the largest investment in our county so far during my tenure as Economic Development Director. In Stokes County, we realize the value that agritourism brings to the local economy, and we appreciate Mr. Carroll for his efforts to invest and provide a positive economic impact, creating additional job availability in an area of the county that will benefit greatly. With that, I'd like to introduce Mr. Carroll.
Thank you, Will.
Great to be before you this evening. I know there's been a lot of speculation about what we're out there doing and all kinds of rumors floating around, so we're here tonight to try to dispel some of those rumors and explain kind of the vision and the plan. My name is Roy Carroll. My address is 102 North Elm Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. My daughter's actually a better speaker than I, so that's why I let her go before me. I hate to follow a better speaker, but anyway, she did a pretty good job there. But anyways, why are we here tonight? Well, we're here tonight because a number of years ago, I decided I wanted to find 100 acres, 200 acres to get away from some of, I live downtown in Greensboro, and sometimes it gets a little rowdy downtown, so just looking at a place I could go downtown and get away from some of that. And so, you know, kicking things around and working with realtors and found more than 100 acres, a couple thousand acres. And so I closed on that, and then bought some more acreage, and now we're, you know, in excess of 3,000 acres. We're closer to 4,000 acres that we've assembled, and three counties and two states. So our company is a development company, and don't know what you know about us, but anyways, we're a four and a half billion dollar company. My father started the company when, and I, when I was in college at UNCG, and he was a meat cutter, and he got laid off, and we were trying to figure out what we're going to do, and so he had done a little renovation on the side, so we said, well, we had some friends won the house early 80s. Interest rates were pretty high back then, as some of you may recall. But anyways, we built a house while we tried to figure out what we were doing. By the time we finished building that house, I had some other friends who won the house built, and after the second house, I said, we may be able to make a living building homes. So we formed a little home building business, and, you know, partners 50/50. And then about 1990, he decided he wanted to retire, and so I bought his half of the company and said I had the best partner I could ever have. I'm not going to have another partner in anything I do. I switched and got in more apartment development down, about 17,000 apartments in six states, and we do some industrial. We do, you may, B-Safe Storage, one of our brands that we started, very proud of, got a great team assembled to do that. But, so anyways, back to while we're here, I assembled this property, and our company's used to working with 10 acres, maybe 100 acres, but all of a sudden, I have thousands acres, you know, that we own. And so I hired a company out of Northern Virginia that specialized in going larger estates, larger tracts of land, and how to plan it, and they had the tools and software and everything to look at, because I'll be honest with you, there's parts of this property I've never stepped on, you know, tracks. And so one of the things that I knew that we wanted to do is we wanted to do a stable equestrian center. So, you know, sometimes these things kind of evolve, you know, you're given the slate to work on, and this was, this was a beautiful slate, it's beautiful rolling hills, as you know, but that also was one of the problems that we had to deal with is there's, is rolling and not too conducive, a large portion of it, to pasture lands and building a large, large, a medium-sized equestrian center. So this company zeroed in on the pasture along Victory Hill Church Road, the six tenths of mile that we're talking about here tonight. And the building would sit basically on the side of the road. And of course, that won't work if you've got horses out there, and y'all know how these horses are, they cost more than the first house I ever owned. So, you know, we needed to try to figure out how to work around that and everything, and we've looked at another, a number of plans, we tried to look at alternate sites, and trust me, if there was a place I could put this, and you say, Roy, you've got all this acreage, can't you find a place? It really doesn't work. We have done a pretty exhaustive study on different parts of the property, and we have had a struggle trying to find an alternate location. So what is an equestrian center? That's one of the things I kind of scratched my head, because, you know, a stable equestrian center means a lot of things to a lot of different peoples. Is this just for one person? Are we talking here tonight, close the road, just Roy can build a nice barn for his own enjoyment and pleasure and all that? And, you know, if that's the case, what is the impact in the community? It'd be pretty minimal, to be honest with you. But what we have designed, and in the process of designing, is a first-class equestrian center. And I want to show you a rendering tonight. It's still a plan that works, but I think it'll kind of add light to the quality that we're talking about here. And we'll see if this works. Thank you, sir. So as you can see, this is, this is not your ordinary barn stable. This is, this is quite a facility. And I can tell you that this is not the largest facility, but it will be one of the best equestrian facilities. I can tell you that there's nothing, there's nothing like this that I'm aware of in Guilford County, Forsyth County, Surrey County. This represents tens of millions of dollars of investment in your community. This is the economic, you know, situation that we're talking about now. We already have at Carrollwood, we have 10 employees. We'll have at least two dozen more employees that we will employ at this when it's constructed. Now, what do you do, you know, with a center like this? Yeah, there are obviously horses, but there's more. One of the big things in your community and this part of the world is acturism, and this will be a draw for people to come, not just, not just to enjoy horses, but events, education, corporate retreats, weddings. That is a huge, huge thing this day in time, is just trying to find spaces for those type of endeavors. We do think there's a great opportunity to partner with some educational, be it high school, be it some surrounding colleges, universities on an educational front. But this will be first-class materials, it'll be stone, it'll be brick, it'll be wood. You won't see vinyl. Storm comes through, we won't be going down the road picking up bits and pieces. And so I gave you a little bit of history about our company to tell you that, you know, this, we won't borrow one dime on this. We will do this out of pocket. This will go into a trust. This will be helpful for my family for years and generations to come. And so it won't be, well, this is a great idea, but Roy got hit by the beer truck on the way home, and, you know, the idea's halfway cooked, and now what do we have? We've got, you know, this facility out there. It will be run professionally, maintained professionally, and a huge asset. But also the prestige of having something like this in your community, that is a draw. I mean, again, we talk about events and spaces, we're talking about low intensity, you know, we could have bluegrass concerts in the afternoon, or gospel, or something like that. This is not going to draw thousands and thousands of people. This is going to, again, low impact, but high, high quality, multi-tens of millions of dollars investment, minimum, minimum of probably 30-some employees when it's built. And again, I think this will be an excellent addition to the community, and I'd be glad to make myself available. Any comments or questions that Commissioners may have at this time?
If you wouldn't mind, would you mind showing it to your friend? I know some of them's kind of...
I think you got the next Rich Strike coming to that stable. You never know. You never know. I think that Rich Strike's owner was just as shocked as anybody on that Kentucky Derby, for sure. Go ahead.
I do have a question for you. Have you talked to our tax department on like what kind of revenue you're talking about bringing in on the northern side of the county? And the main reason why I'm bringing this up, here the past week, there's been talks about possible closure of schools, millions of dollars that needs to be done to some of our facilities here to keep it open. And of course, one of the reasons they brought about this, saying there was no economic development on the northern side, even though Duke Power is up on this side, but, you know, trying to find different ways to help a struggling area, and I, how you feel, my parents have a business on this side, and it's hard to, when you're out here in the nowhere, it's hard to grow, but sometimes you deal with every obstacle that's thrown your way. So could you tell us what kind of economic impact this would have for our area with this?
I don't know the exact dollar amounts and everything. Again, this is, this is kind of the first step. We're not going to develop this land, and you won't see housing developments, you won't see, you know, there's a lot of rumors out there about things like that. You'll never see anything like that. But I thought about hiring an economist, but I didn't want to overburden the meeting here with a bunch of experts lined up to follow me, but it will, there will be a positive impact on the tax base with this here. And potential sales tax too, of, you know, if there's a, if there's a gift shop or something like that associated, so.
Right. I had another question that just left my mind. Give me one second, I'll see if I can get on that.
Okay, we'll see if anybody else has anything.
I don't think so. Pretty self-explanatory.
Oh, is there anything, like with your neighbors around, is there anything that you can do to set up, like, is there ways to have better access to like fire trucks or something, any way that could help lower the home insurance for your neighbors in the surrounding areas? Are there things that you can do with that too? Is there any plans in that?
Oh, absolutely. And I've had a conversation personally with both the Fire Chief at Northwest Rockingham Fire Department and the Sandy Ridge Fire Department, and they're very receptive to working with us. As my daughter Madison stated, dry hydrants, there's a need in the area. We talked to them about GPS locating some of the roads that we're opening up, old logging roads and such like that, so they can get around. Because it may be a neighbor in property that's got a situation they need to get to, and it may be better to come through our property. Told them they could absolutely have keys and access to the property, and we'd be glad to work with them, training, and to help facilitate anything that we can.
Okay. And some of the staff that you have that would be on this property, is there, you know, like any kind of EMS staff or any kind of medical staff at all there?
We're looking, we're looking at that possibly. And again, the Sandy Ridge Fire Chief, I spoke to him about, is there any way that we can partner with you? Is there a fundraiser or something that we can do to help? Because, you know, I know the struggle is there, you know, you've got rising costs and everything else, and then the only way that you can reconcile that is you either have to expand your tax base, or you have to cut services, or you raise taxes that no one wants to hear, right? So I think this is a great step in the right direction to help reconcile that.
Okay. And that's just a few questions I've had out from the public, and I'm just kind of passing on to you.
Okay. Thank you.
Thank you.
I don't have any questions per se. I think you've explained everything, Roy, really well, but... But I'm just kind of stunned, that's one of the most beautiful buildings I've ever seen. And I cannot imagine having that in Stokes County, what a, what a blessing it would be to have that.
Well, I can tell you what I told my wife. I said, if I start to do anything halfway with this beautiful piece of land that, that, that we've been blessed with, please kick me under the table and, and tell me to stop and, and look at it again. So, uh, that's my, that's my promise to you all, that everything that we do will be first-class, best-in-class. You know, something that I think we can all be proud of one day.
I might have to get married again, just to use it.
There you go.
That's a joke. I'm, I'm kidding. But I will say this, um, you know, of course, those of us who have, um, you know, known that you're planning something really nice for this area, of course, we've done our little bit of homework, and what I can say that I've found is that you do have a history of supporting projects that increase the quality of life in Greensboro and the areas that you go into and the community. And I think what you've done, other places, has enhanced the value, um, for that area. And, uh, I think that's exactly what this will do for the Stokes-Rockingham area, is, um, is enhance it. And, um, it'll be, be beneficial. And I think you've pretty much changed the face of Greensboro. And if you can help us change the face of, uh, Stokes County as far as it being a, a destination that, you know, like you say, it's not going to be thousands of people, but the quality of the experience is going to be there. And I think you're going to have people from all over that will want to, uh, be coming to things at this venue just for that reason, and corporate retreats and things. And I think that, that will kind of make a name for Stokes County in a lot of circles, um, because we know how beautiful our county is. We know, uh, what, you know, we've got here, but a lot of other people don't. And just the, for them to come and visit this, and then they may want to visit Hanging Rock and Pilot Mountain, and, you know, come to the arts market here, and Danbury, you know, it'll be, I think, a, a real draw for, for our area. So, I commend you for, um, what you're trying to do with this property. And I know that you have said that, we're talking about low impact, and how that you plan to only develop about five percent of the, the property and leave most of it intact as it is. And I don't think anybody could ask for anything better than that. So, because we love our, our county and the, all of its natural resources, so.
Right, absolutely.
And I, I know you will, if you don't already love it, you will grow to love it, for sure. And to me, this is like a legacy-type thing that, that I think, you know, you can put your name on and be very proud of it.
Thank you.
Mr. Carroll, that, that is a very beautiful building you got drilled out there. A couple of things, uh, I've lived in this county all my life, and, uh, I've always heard this side of the county, that side of the county. And it's always made me sick to my stomach, because we're all Stokes County citizens. We're Stokes County citizens. Uh, I think that right there would be one of the greatest things that's happened to the Sandy Ridge area. Uh, I don't think that would be nothing but pluses for that area. A lot of people coming there, uh, I know there's restaurants up there, and there's other businesses up there, that's a plus for them. Uh, and going back to your dry hydrant, go back to the fire chief, and, uh, ask him about a low-level strainer and a turbo suction before you spend your money on the dry hydrant. If you can get him a road to a pond or a creek, that's all he needs, trust me. As a fire chief, I can tell you that. So, uh, go back and speak to him about that part. But I appreciate what you've showed here today.
Thank you.
Anybody else have anything to add? All right, well, thank you so much for bringing that and sharing a little vision with us for, for that property. All right, moving on to discussion, and the next item is the courthouse needs an expansion.
We discussed this at the last meeting, and of course Perry was here that evening, too, to go over some of his plans for the courthouse expansion and the renovations. Um, and I think everybody was in agreement on the plan that he had in place was a good plan. The judges are in agreement with it meets the needs that they're looking for as far as the growth of the courthouse. Um, the one thing that we had a question on was the board of elections, where to relocate them to, and also the helipad up top. We looked at that building. And you all asked that we look into a little further on with the board of elections on what their preference was for that. And, um, after speaking to Jason Perry, elections director, and he's speaking with his board members and some of them, they are in favor of building a new building rather than converting anything to a space for them. Um, the cost they felt like difference was not minimal, but not enough to them to not move forward with a new structure that would meet all their needs as far as storage, and what they need for all the voting and early voting, and all their equipment, and just their daily activity. Um, of course, we had talked about locating it up there on the hill, where the helipad's at now. A couple of the members spoke a little bit to Jason about, um, possibly looking at other sites if there are any, but also being okay with that site as long as we had good signage for letting people know that's where the board of elections office is now. I feel like it's sort of tough to find in the courthouse if you don't know where it's at. So, if you had a good sign, and we're replacing all the signs around here anyway, that'll help to replace that. So, that cost, we talked about that estimated with Perry, was about five hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars to build that space that they were requesting. And also to move the helipad, Stewart measured that helipad that we currently have, and he and Brandon Gentry, EMS director, looked into what it would cost to relocate that and where we could put it. Stewart said if they did the work, as far as our public work staff and poured the exact pad that we have currently, for the cost, they could do it for about thirty-five hundred dollars. Um, that's if they do the work. And of course, as far as looking at the prep and the locations, Brandon suggested two different sites, one of which would be up where the old maintenance building used to be, up, you just keep going past the new maintenance building there. That's a pretty level spot by the impound lot there. Or looking at the location beside the hospital where the new EMS station's located in Danbury, up there in that area. So, two possible sites they're looking at there, and if they did the work themselves, the cost wouldn't be quite as big as we thought originally. So, those were the two things that we were supposed to answer before this meeting. And our plan now, as far as moving forward, is if the board is in favor of that is, is for us to just place those items in this year's budget as far as the courthouse renovations, utilizing that two million dollars in state grant funding, and also placing this item in there under our capital projects for a, you know, finance project for the board of elections and the remainder of that courthouse for the board's consideration in the upcoming budget. Unless there's any other questions you want to answer prior to us moving forward with that in the budget.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Uh, Shannon, one thing I've, while campaigning, been talking to a lot of veterans, and they are very pleased with the service Larry's providing them. And they want to make sure he gets taken care of as far as office space. Like, they specifically would like him to have a window, which I think you're working on.
Yeah.
But, uh, just, we need to pay very close attention to that, because there's a lot of people be watching to make sure that we have a good facility for him to provide services that the veterans need.
Larry's, Larry's current office space, his actual office space, is not really large. That area you enter into is a little larger even than Larry's real space. We talked with Larry about moving up to one of these offices on the third floor of this building, which would provide an elevator, so we're meeting all those requirements, and also provide him with a window. We can make a waiting area for him outside that office, and Larry seems agreeable to that, and thinks that space would be good for his clients as well. So, that's the plan for now, is to put Larry in this building on the third floor.
Would he have an equal amount of space to what he has now?
He'd have equal amount of working space as far as his office space. What he wouldn't have is that little front area when you walk into that office, has like a little sitting area, which the sitting area can literally also just be outside, as long as there's a chair for anybody going. And typically Larry's schedule, he only schedules one person at a time, unless he has somebody just pop in to wait. So, he usually makes his schedule so nobody's really waiting for the next person to, to go out.
Okay, good.
Yeah. He really wants that window.
Just wanted to let you know, people are watching what we do there, so we need to make sure we get it right.
Yeah.
Is it okay for him to sit out in the hallway and wait? Is that, is that a fire marshal thing?
Well, the HR has that now, if you notice, in their hallway back here, they have a little waiting area, you know, this way. As long as we don't go too, you know, too far out into the hallway, and we leave room for people to get through, it's fine.
Okay, good, that's the only question I had.
Any other questions?
Then we'll go ahead and move into the budget.
Yeah, I think, um, that where we're at economically with, um, how things could go either way, um, but more than likely, the building costs are just going to climb. So, I feel like the sooner we can lock it in, the better. Uh, it's, it's probably not going to get any cheaper. So, I would be in favor of, of going ahead with this budget cycle, of putting it on there. Seems like that's the consensus.
We'll redeliver the budget at the next meeting, so we're so close to that end way.
Right.
On that, as far as the numbers go.
You'd be looking at USDA loan to do that, possibly?
Yeah, and, I mean, we're also within this budget, I won't talk about it much, because we'll do it next meeting, but we're also building in some ARPA, you know, funding as well. There might be some sources and things that we can free up, um, county money that won't be have to be financed, and some projects that we're looking into as well, so.
Okay, good.
It'll be some, just some recommendations that we're making.
Okay, thank you. The next item is the Stokes County Aging Planning Committee appointment.
Thank you, Madam Chair. Um, so the Stokes County Aging Planning Committee has many vacancies. Uh, I know Brandon Hooker was just nominated at the last meeting, uh, but there are still five vacancies for that committee. So, four more applicants have been received, um, Jack Sneed, Tammy Mae Bennett, Joanne Hall, and Judy Hennis. So, they, we have received their applications, and they request a nomination.
Okay, this time I'll open the floor for any other nominations?
I'll make a motion and we close the nominations.
Second.
All right, all those in favor?
Aye.
Okay, nominations are closed, and we'll have these back on for action. Okay, thank you. Okay, that takes us to the action agenda, and the first item is the proposed maintenance of effort budget request.
Make a motion to approve.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Second item is the green box site redesign for Pinnacle and Walnut Cove.
Motion to approve.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
The next item is the proclamation recognizing EMS week, and I've asked Vice Chair Barney Castle to read that proclamation.
Designate the week of May fifteenth through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as Emergency Medical Service Week, where as Stokes County Emergency Medical Service is a viable public service, and whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service teams are ready to provide life-saving care to those who need twenty-four hours a day, seven days a week. And whereas access to quality emergency care dramatically improves the survival and recovery rate of those who experience sudden illness or injuries. And whereas Emergency Medical Service has grown to fill a gap by providing important outpatient care, including prevention of available medicine, follow-up care, and access to telemedicine. And whereas the medical emergency service system consists of first responders, emergency medical technicians, paramedic, emergency medical dispatchers, firefighters, police officers, educators, administrators, pre-hospital nurses, emergency nurses, emergency physicians, trained members of the public and out-of-hospital medical care providers. And whereas the members of the Emergency Medical Service teams, weather care, volunteers engage in thousands of honors, specialized training, and continued education to enhance their life-saving skills. And whereas it is appropriate to recognize the value and the cost of the Emergency Medical Service providers by designating Emergency Medical Service Week. Now, therefore, we Stokes County Commissioners and the recognition of the event due hereby proclaim the week, May fifteenth, twen- through the twenty-first, two thousand twenty-two, as Emergency Medical Service Week. With the theme EMS Week leading to the challenge, I encourage the community to observe this week and appropriate programs, ceremonies, and activities. Brandon Gentry, EMS Director.
All right, thank you.
I'll make a motion to approve it.
All right.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, the next item is the proclamation recognizing Older Americans Month, and I think Mr. Mendenhall has that one.
I wonder why I got the older Americans. What a shock.
It's all good.
Whereas Stokes County includes a growing number of older Americans who contribute their strength, wisdom, and experience to our community. And whereas communities benefit when people of all ages, abilities, and backgrounds are welcomed, included, and supported. And whereas Stokes County recognizes our need to create a community that provides the services and supports older Americans need to thrive and live independently for as long as possible. And whereas Stokes County can work to build an even better community for our older residents by planning programs that encourage independence, by ensuring activities are responsive to individual needs and preferences, by increasing access to services that support aging in place. Now, therefore, we, the Stokes County Board of County Commissioners, do hereby proclaim, May twenty-twenty-two, to be Older Americans Month. We urge every resident to recognize the contributions of our older citizens, help to create an inclusive society, and join efforts to support older Americans' choices about how they age in their communities, dated this night, day of May twenty-twenty-two.
Thank you. All right, do you have a motion?
Motion.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
All right, next item is the proposed closure/abandonment of Victory Hill Church Road. And I will read the resolution aloud. Resolution to abandon and close a portion of Victory Hill Church Road, SR number sixteen thirty-two, in Sandy Ridge, North Carolina. Whereas the Stokes County Board of Commissioners received a petition on January the twenty-first, twenty-twenty-two, to close a portion of Victory Hill Church Road that is located in Stokes County. And whereas pursuant to NCGS one five-three A two four-one, the Stokes County Board of Commissioners, at a regular meeting on April the eleventh, two thousand twenty-two, adopted a resolution fixing the date and hour for a public hearing on said petition, and declaring intent, intent to close was adopted by three-to-one vote, with one vote against and one abstained. And the date and the hour were fixed as May the ninth, twenty-twenty-two, at six PM in the Commissioners' chambers of the Ronald Reagan Administration Building in Danbury. Whereas notice of the board's intent to close and scheduled public hearing was published one week, for, once a week, for three consecutive weeks in the Stokes News, a newspaper of general circulation published in Stokes County, North Carolina. And notice of the proposed closing and public hearing was posted in at least two prominent locations along the said portion of Victory Hill Church Road preceding the final hearing. And notice was also mailed to abutting owners, all as required by law, and stated in the resolution declaring the Stokes County Board of Commissioners' intent to close a portion of Victory Hill Church Road, and calling for a date for public hearing on the matter. And whereas ownership of abutting and adjoining property is as follows. Owner, R. Carroll Farm Operations LLC, address two oh-one North Elm Street, Greensboro, North Carolina. Whereas at a meeting of the Stokes County Board of Commissioners held May ninth, two thousand twenty-two, a public hearing was held on the petition to close a portion of Victory Hill Church Road. Whereas the Stokes County Board of Commissioners is satisfied that closing said portion of Victory Hill Church Road is not contrary to the public interest, and that no individual owning property adjoining, abutting, or in the vicinity of said property, of said road, would hereby be deprived of reasonable means of aggress or egress of their property. And whereas the Stokes County Board of Commissioners is of the opinion that said road should be abandoned from secondary road system, and that the abandonment is in the best interest of the public and the division of highways, and that the resolution requests for abandonment from the state-maintained secondary road system should be adopted by this board. Now, therefore, be it resolved by the Stokes County Board of Commissioners, that said portion of Victory Hill Church Road, Sandy Ridge, North Carolina, described as SR number sixteen thirty-two in Stokes County, should be closed, and the request for abandonment from the state-maintained road system is hereby adopted. It is further resolved that upon abandonment of said road from the state-maintained secondary road system, an order closing said road shall be adopted by this board. Do I have a motion?
Motion to approve, Madam Chairman.
I have a second.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye, opposed?
Aye, I'm opposed.
All right, and motion carries, three, one. All right.
Motion, we turn.
Second.
All those in favor?
Aye.
Aye. All right, thank you.